Great, all right. Good afternoon, everyone. It's 1 o'clock, March 9th, Tuesday, March 9th. We have a special meeting scheduled for us today to consider a couple of formal items that came or were finalized later last week. And so we changed our work session to a special meeting today. And I put the agenda items in the chat, so I will ask if we have any changes or questions on the agenda, the three agenda items. First is the MOU with Chaffey County for Coroner Services Assistance. Second is the abatement of property taxes for the Tabor Grand. And third is our planned work session with building and land use staff.
Looks good.
Okay. All right. With that then, let's get into our new business. So first, we have our MOU that we've drafted for a partnership with Chaffey County, the Chaffey County Coroner for Services and Transport and Storage. We got notification last week from Chaffey County's attorney that Chaffey County Board of Commissioners has approved the MOU. And so now it's in our hands. I have no problem or questions about the language. Chris, I wonder if you have any other final comments there for us before we entertain a motion?
No, it pretty much, I think the latest revisions to that were prompted by concerns that the Chaffey Commissioners expressed about wanting to make sure that their support and assistance wouldn't result in liability for the county. And so the final changes that were made were just to kind of address that. But then I was also able to get a mirror provision in there where Lake County is also not responsible for the services that Chaffey is providing, so that if there's an issue with the services they provide in supporting Lake County, that Lake County won't be responsible for those. So I think overall, it's well balanced. You know, I think it's a situation where we really need to have this type of a backup plan in place regardless of what the situation is, I think, with the corner. So even as issues may resolve here in Lake County, I just think this is something good to have available as the need might arise. Happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Great.
Actually, just on that last point, that's a good point, Chris, about, I mean, I wonder if down the road, once we have the issues here in Lake County resolved, whether this could sort of morph into kind of a, I don't know if mutual aid is the right word, but sort of a sort of, you know, annually reviewed or something, sort of mutual aid kind of coroner service, you know, agreement.
Yeah, that would be my hope. Right now, they're only willing to take it out till the end of June or within 30 days following a vacancy. And so, and I'll tell you all, originally, that was only that it would terminate within five days of a vacancy. And I was like, you know, it might take us more than five days to get another coroner, at least an interim appointment. So they agreed to the 30 days after the vacancy is there. You know, I think, I think it's good to see if, let's just see what happens with it. And my hope is nothing bad happens with it, and then we can revisit it. In addition of, you know, I think it's good with these rural counties to have this type of backup support available as needed.
Yeah. Well, I didn't mean to derail this meeting, but that was an interesting idea, just to, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and I think, I think typically with, with, I guess, more stable or reliable understanding of corner operations, you know, rural, our surrounding communities help each other out. I think for this, our purposes here, you know, we we will be calling Chaffey County, and they should expect a phone call. So we definitely wanted to get some language and an agreement and an understanding of that, those expectations. But, uh, well, without any other questions, if my fellow commissioners don't have any other questions for legal or comments, I will entertain a motion on the MOU drafted.
I will make a motion that we approve the MOU with Chaffey County for Coroner Service Assistance.
Second.
Okay, great. Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Not for me. And I'll say, oh, yeah, I mean, we, I think we've all had a chance to see some earlier iterations of this. So it's, it's nothing in there as a surprise. So thanks for working it through.
Perfect. All right. With no further comment, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thanks so much for working on that, Chris, with Chaffey County.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Mudge, you are noted as the signatory for this. So let me know if you need me to print and bring you a hard copy or something to start with. Because I think they're waiting to hear back or see that Lake County has accepted it before they sign off.
Sounds good. Yeah, I will plan, I have a bunch of signatures to put down on paper, and I plan on going in this afternoon or evening to do that. So I should be able to get that back and send to you in the form of PDF for everybody's records.
Yeah, that would be great, just so I can have something to send to their county attorney to show that Lake County signed off on it.
You bet.
All right, thanks so much.
Yep. All right, next on our agenda, number two, we have the abatement of property taxes for the Tabor Grand. This was brought to us by the Assessors Office. And typically, if there is an abatement and it's under $10,000, that is an administrative process. This one is over $10,000, and the big change for the Tabor Graham was a correction on the commercial square footage calculated for the valuation of of the property. And so that was corrected by the Assessors Office and the board, because it's over $10,000 of a difference there in the taxes to abate, the board must make a formal decision to accept or deny the request. Any questions by my fellow board members on the Tabor Grand abatement?
No, I don't have any.
None for me?
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve, actually, let me pull up the file name, sorry about that. Let's see. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve account R006964 2019 Notice of Correction for the Tabor Grand, LLP.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Very good. Um, okay. And now, last on our agenda is our original work session topic. We have land use staff here. Hi, Paul and Anne.
Hi.
Good afternoon. And let's see, we have a few items here listed. But this is an extension of our last work session on the 20, was it second or third? I think third. That we, that we were talking through a bunch of land use items and issues. So let's see, we have staff projects, hearing process enforcement, and staffing on here. Do we have? Sorry, I had not pulled up our last kind of list of topics that we talked about the other week. Do we want to give any kind of updates or status on some of those items that we talked about before jumping into these?
I'm not sure what kind of update you would be referring to, Sarah. Are you talking about like the collaboration on, on traffic stuff, or what specifically?
Yeah, anything, I guess, either from staff or commissioners on any other thoughts, kind of from the conversation last week. We talked a lot about the backcountry zoning and staff capacity and other priorities. We talked about, like you said, Kayla, kind of getting together with the city on gateway planning, maybe comp plan, three mile planning. And I, I was told that the City Planning and Zoning Commission, I think in their regular meeting last week, had, had, had this discussion about their comp plan review and looking at three mile. I'm not sure what the discussion consisted of, did not get an update there. Just wanted to open up the offer for any kind of updates or thoughts on what we had discussed before jumping into some of the new things.
I'd be happy to jump in and say, I mean, I just wanted to say thanks both to the Planning Commission and to staff. I thought yesterday's sort of session on sort of like, what does a subdivision process look like, was super helpful for me, especially sort of having not been through that as a commissioner before. So I just appreciate taking the time to do that. And sort of similarly, I think Heather, the Chair of Planning Commission, sent around some number of days ago to, to sort of like some, some questions to sort of gauge the BSCC's feelings about the backcountry zoning work and outstanding concerns. And again, I thought that was just like a really helpful way to, you know, not have us be the roadblock at the end of some work by raising new concern. So I just, you know, a comment that I really appreciate that, because I think it helps smooth, smooth out the work to do that kind of stuff. So that was my comment.
I'd like to say, I think that's a pretty critical idea for staff right now. Because I think that there is a fair amount of work that still has to be done on the backcountry zoning before it becomes something. But if it's the board's desire to focus elsewhere, and I think that Anne and I probably ought to know about that now so that we, because we haven't done any work on it in the last couple of weeks. And I think, you know, this, that's a project that's been sort of off and on for 10 years now. Or maybe more. And I don't think that Anne and I place as high a priority on it as perhaps the Planning Commission does, because I know that at least Howard and Heather have been on the Planning Commission that whole time. And I think that they both put place a pretty high priority on that. If it's the board's desire that we don't, then we probably ought to know that now.
Well, and I wonder, was it reiter, was, was our conversation from our work session on the 23rd, was that information kind of where we landed of saying, okay, we need to talk about our priorities? Which, again, this, this meeting, following that, is a continuation of that conversation so that we can kind of come to that more distinct direction for staff and, and understanding of what is our capacity? What are our priorities and do, you know, where does backcountry zoning land in that list of priorities? Was that?
Not, not specifically, not specifically last work session, a couple of weeks ago. But it was part of that discussion. And I think that we've been becoming more aware of it over the last six or eight weeks, that there is some reluctance on the board's part to focus on the backcountry zoning.
So, so the, sorry, Paul, I didn't quite understand, the, the summary of our last work session, the conversation or the direction of the conversation was not?
Not specifically.
Okay, brought up yesterday with the Planning Commission, okay.
I do seem to recall that we, we touched on it, but I think it's been touched on for the last six, six to eight weeks. And I, you know, and I appreciate the board's desire to not put its foot down on something that there is some desire by the Planning Commission to proceed with. But I think that it might, might actually take us asking you to do that if, if, when all is said and done, and the Planning Commission acts on this backcountry zone district, and then it actually comes to you the following week or so. And and then you're not thinking that this is what we want to do.
Yeah, and I see, I see Heather joined us, and I just, Heather, I was asking staff, you know, what, what, if any, kind of a summary of our last work session, the board and staffs on February 23rd was reiterated, reiterated to the Planning Commission yesterday, if any at all. And this today is a continuation of that conversation for us, because I think our big concern and question was really melding and having that collective list of priorities as the board, with staff, you know, from our perspective, and bringing that to the Planning Commission and kind of having that conversation again. I think a lot of what we have struggled with on backcountry specifically is staff capacity and prioritizing this above a few of the other things that we really see kind of coming to a head. And so today, I put in our, in our chat, we were going to talk, continue that conversation through, sorry, talking through staff projects, some processes, enforcement, and staffing in general in the department, so that we could then perhaps hit on, you know, what the board priorities might be for land use. And then bring that back to a conversation with the Planning Commission. Let's see.
We did, if, I don't know if you wanted me to answer, we didn't, we didn't touch on anything with that. The last night's meeting, the only agenda item was the subdivision review process with, so that the new, newbies could understand kind of what the review process was going to be for Angel View. So we didn't do that. You know, I was kind of waiting to see what came about on this. I think that without knowing, you know, when we brought on the new recruits in the fall, we, we kind of did this whole priority list and what kind of the plan was, and we thought everybody was on board with that. So that's, you know, backcountry was first, and then comp plan review was next on the list. So that was kind of what we moved forward with. And really, until a couple of meetings ago, we didn't realize that there was opposition to us moving forward with backcountry, so that we were kind of taken off guard with that. I think that there is a little bit of frustration with us on that, just because I think that there hasn't been, we didn't know we were presenting to the commissioners why, you know, or what we were doing, or that there were outlined questions on, on the backcountry district or concerns. And I don't know that we've ever had the opportunity to actually present those. You know, just off the cuff, I think there are plenty of really great reasons and, and great reasons that there are several, several community members that are on board with this backcountry zone district, but that I don't think we've had a chance to even present, nor were we necessarily prepared to present yet. And I feel like it's being squashed before it's had a chance to take off. So there's a little bit of frustration with that. And I guess I was hoping that in this continuation of the discussion, that there'd be an opportunity to kind of discuss that and/or have a work session with the Planning Commission to fully understand backcountry and, you know, why there's been so much effort put into it over the years.
Thanks, Heather. Yeah, and I think, I mean, I, what I shared with Steph too, and my frustration on the board, I think goes back to needing to talk through process a little bit. And like Paul said, maybe having an understanding of how developing these priorities and/or focusing on them actually occurs, because I don't think that there was a lot of opportunity for the board to talk with staff outside Planning Commission meetings. And it wasn't quite clear what the Planning Commission expectation was of the board either. So I think that's just where we're trying to revisit, you know, the expectation through all the nuances of our processes. I know I've gotten a couple of questions from Planning Commissioners on the importance of the backcountry versus a number of other items. And so I don't think that there's clarity across staff or Planning Commission or the board. And hence, kind of pressing pause and taking a couple of steps back to, to make sure that we kind of develop these and that staff is reiterating to Planning Commission with board would like to prioritize and vice versa. You know, I know Paul, at one point, requesting to have some of these work sessions. I think there was a concern with conflict of having those conversations with the board outside of Planning Commission meeting. And so I'm glad that I think that's not, no longer a concern. I think it's, as you said a little bit earlier, has proven to be an important part of an efficient process and dedication of our time.
So Sarah, can I ask then what you would recommend the board to consider as priorities for the Planning Commission?
Um, we do have a large list, a long list that's been growing, that we have shared between the board and staff. Do you want to go through that now, or do you want to kind of focus on staff capacity?
I think we have to go through the list first. Because we don't, we won't know if we'll be able to answer if we have staff capacity to address those things if we don't debrief on them. And so I think we should go through that list first. And with Heather being here, this might be a great opportunity for her to, to listen in on what some of those items are. And then that will help us determine what the staff capacity is or what our staffing pattern should look like, I guess.
Give me just a second, I'm pulling that up.
Heather, do you have a copy of that list?
I only have the list from before we did our priorities. So if there's a new growing list, I don't have that. We, I just have the list from when we determined our priorities with the new commission members in the fall.
Okay, I'll email this to you.
Can everybody see the Word document pulled up? Yes.
Sarah, is this what you have pulled up, the same as your handwritten list?
Uh, it includes the hand, yeah, yes, and then some.
And then some, all right.
This is my own working list.
Yeah, I would just say, this is the first time I've seen this.
Well, I did, I did email, I did email this to everyone a couple of times, and then again, last week. But it's not, it's not this exact version. Because I do keep working on that.
Okay.
Um, sorry, I lost my screen. All right, so from the list from the Planning Commission was backcountry zone, comprehensive plan review, making development more affordable, incentivizing versus regulatory. And in discussions, I guess I'll just hop in on that, the comprehensive plan review, we talked about that in a number of meetings to do a review of successes and/or, you know, amendments, because we can do that annually and making any changes. But a big overhaul or plan might not be appropriate for this year, and we have a number of other planning processes in place, like with the wildfire protection planning or rec management planning that could inform, continue to inform the comp plan review. So I guess, I guess I like that there's the word review here and not revision entirely. Because I think those can mean very different things, and we have to be pretty deliberate in how we want to talk about that. When we had our work session with the city, I don't recall, a couple of weeks ago, they were going to ask their Planning Commission to review their comp plan. And again, look at kind of those directed development areas in the city periphery. And they're, what the city has as a three mile plan, which is really in our context of maybe a half mile or a mile plan. And then the development, making development affordable. I think this, for me, this feeds into some operational review, I guess, that, that I would like to kind of discuss, continue to discuss to be sure that we're not, you know, imposing or that we are, we're imposing the appropriate expectations on applicants. I guess I'll put it that way. And then backcountry district is kind of what you have been working on. The list that I, I mean, I don't know how you want to go through this list to talk about any kind of identification of these priorities.
Well, I think for some of those, like, I think, I think we can take off the gravel pit, right? Because I think, or, or are we still working on that a little bit, Sarah?
Well, now, in our conversation about the gravel pit, we did have some lingering agreements with partners that we needed to meet. And we also had word from the city that they would like to move forward in exploring a consolidation of perhaps projects or operations of streets and public works. And so that kind of threw in a new layer of capacity that involved public works. And so we thought maybe we would then put off the gravel pit leasing and shoot for a date later in the year to be able to consider that as a board and post for potential 2022 sorry, award or permitting. Because there is a, there's a number, you know, we have to go through this conditional use permitting for one or both sites. And going through that, our FPU process will be taxing on public works and land use staff. But I don't think we formally decided that or officially decided that.
Um, so some of these, like, I'm not, I'm not sure some of these fit in necessarily the Planning Commission's scope of work. And I don't know, maybe Paul and Anne or Heather, you can, you can add on to those, the ones that come up for me, that I think we can shift to other partners, like, I, I think immediately we can try to shift number 13, number 12, or not number 12, I'm sorry, number 11. Number nine will be taken on with, with the airport and the EDC first until, until we're actually in a place where we're planning for a subdivision, if we get to that point. But I think those are ones that we can potentially move right away.
Okay. Were, was there any title work that still needed to be done by land use?
No.
Okay.
No, it's good to go. No, it's good to go.
And on that, what about seven? Like, I'm not sure.
I think
needs to do that work.
I think for number seven, it needs to start with the assessor's office and mapping because we have to have an inventory of what parcels we own and what interests we own in parcels. Because a lot of the ownership that we have in parcels comes from tax default. And so it might be like 1/21st of a mining claim. And so we should understand kind of what that means for us really. And what the ownership actually looks like on those parcels and where they're located.
I would just, as I'm looking at like number 12 in the housing authority and and item B deed restrictions. I just want to make sure that the board is aware that there is a subcommittee working on deed restriction. And you know, there's an upcoming meeting that Christie has, the housing manager has put together with the, with all the stakeholders, city and county for April 22nd. And we've been working with Michael from the Southern Economic Development Corp, is that right? Who has a large experience in deed restriction. So you know, those, the housing work is being actively pursued by subcommittees that are going to be reporting back to the board with their work. So I see several different like housing kind of things and, and so there are some committees that are being prepared to put together presentations and information to bring back to the board.
Sarah, um, design guidelines, number one. What, what, what do you want from that that we don't already have?
Um, Paul, that was in reference to the new development coming in on Mountain View in our conversation last week. And I guess to, you know, your, the design guidelines currently I think are really rely on that site plan review. If I recall that correctly, like you said.
I think you do, yeah.
And a planning commission review. So I think it would be helpful at least just to have the conversation with the planning commission and or, I know the last time that we had had our work session, I just wanted to let staff know that that was important for me and other constituents to be sure that, you know, that, that kind of new development in that area. That's likely to see a lot of new development from the, from the ground up. Is going to be important to have a, have a cohesive idea of what we want to see as a county, have a cohesive idea of what the city and or the rail yard is planning. So that it does look like a planned kind of gateway area.
So what we have right now needs some more cooperation and collaboration with the city and rail yard in order to be able to enhance them above what we already have?
Either enhance them or be sure as we enforce them through the process that we have in place. They're, they're, they're matching with what's, with what's being permitted, you know, right across the street and in that area. You know, I think in 2015, those were approved. It might be worth a conversation annually to to look at, you know, new best practices or new community desires with the new planning commissions and boards. And what those mean and whether or not we feel like we have the tools to leverage through the, the current design guidelines to avoid you know, regrets that I know we've had in the past.
How about then if I get together with Sarah Dallas? Show her our design guidelines as they currently exist and and then take it from there.
Sure.
I mean, as a first step.
Yeah.
An easy baby step too.
I, I just have a quick question or maybe it's just a footnote that number two A would suggest that as we look at design guidelines and maybe getting a little more specific about them. That we want to make sure that we balance that with the priority that is highlighted at two A. That we don't inhibit applicants and incur costs beyond reason. So as we look and, and we're asking to be more specific in design guidelines and the quality and aesthetics of construction. That certainly is going to have an impact on two A, so just maybe a side note.
That's a great point, Anne. And I think, I think that we need to, yeah, we need to review that between like legal, the board and staff on kind of an overall process of like balancing where we want to give our focus in, in those parts of the process. And it's, you know, as, as a lot of things, if that, if that expectation is set upfront. How can we, that, that's always better for the applicant. And so I guess what, you know, if design guidelines. My, sorry, my recollection from the document that you shared, Paul, is that it's a site review, but what kind of you know, what kind of conversations does staff have with those applicants to lead into that site plan review? Cause that's probably the first step.
Well, I think we, when we first start talking to an applicant about what they want to do. And it, and it needs a site plan review. We just incorporate those, that, that section of the code of design guidelines in with what we're talking to them about.
Right, I, I would just say that, you know, we, we point to the code and, and set the expectation that they need to create an application that's consistent with the code requirements. And then this is vetted with the planning commission for final action. So it's not just direction of staff. Direction of staff typically on any land use application is to help them and assist them to find the parts of the code that they'll be required to show consistency with. And then they provide, you know, evidence that they can do that. And then the next step of site plan review is to take that to the planning commission for final decision-making on the outcomes.
I see.
We don't make stuff up as we go along.
No, no, but if we are going to get detailed, you know, in, in what we kind of expect. And if that changes from year to year or community representation and board to board. You know, what, what does that look like and is that outlined adequately to support staff in their conversations with the applicant before that's brought to the planning commission for that site review? Heather?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, you know, I think these design guidelines could potentially part of the comp plan review that we had on our agenda was definitely just an overview of like what's working, what's not, are there any things we need to change? But it was honestly, that discussion came and was stemmed out of one of the last subdivision meetings with the Angel View. And there were so much public opposition and, you know, and questions about why we can't enforce this or why we can't force them to do this or that. And, and just realizing that perhaps there are sections of our comp plan that, that don't touch on that quite enough. And or if there are things we need to tighten up more in the LDC such as design guidelines. So that we're making sure that, hey, maybe in this area, we want to make sure. I mean, similarly to the scenic overlay conservation is like if, if we, we identify this section as being, hey, we need to make sure that all of the buildings, similar to what they did with the ECO bus barn building, right? We want to make sure that they're all nice and beautiful. And it's interesting because I actually was late to this meeting because I was on the EDC webinar with a guy talking about creating, you know, smart places and smart development. And there was so much emphasis, emphasis on that, that like, don't just develop, but make sure you have the design guidelines that go along with it. And I think that was the main purpose for us to have that on our agenda. As far as the comp plan review was to be able to identify which areas we need to focus a little bit more on because we are seeing so much more development. Which areas maybe we need to change. And so I don't know if we want, maybe in, in that process to come up with design guidelines that maybe are different and different. You know, sections of town and identifying what those differences maybe need to be. But that would be something that I would see as incorporating into that agenda item on our list.
Yeah, I like that thought a lot. I think, yeah, in my head, I'm not thinking of, you know, private, well, it's all private, but I'm not thinking of residential areas. I'm more focused and concerned on that commercial. You know, corridor and that commercial development for the benefit and creating the best harmony with those residential areas, if there are residential areas neighboring. And creating kind of infrastructure that you know, if, if vacated can be filled easily by, you know, the next opportunity. So I like that idea of focusing that guideline development and or just the conversations even around specific areas or zones. I think that'd be helpful.
What, an inside plan review is only done on commercial or multifamily? That's, that's the trigger for a site plan review?
Yeah, you know, the design guidelines as they're currently written do focus on commercial development. Not entirely, but, but they, for the most part are. And I will say that they are quite intentionally kind of open-ended, vague is another word that I might use to allow the planning commission to have a look at a particular design and, and say, well, does that meet that statement? And the planning commission can either say, yes, it does, or it can if, if you do this. And come up with conditions of approval. But I, I, the intent of the design guidelines was that they rise to a level of vagueness that allows for a great deal of flexibility.
What are the expectations for that, for the, for any criteria to be developed? If there, I get that, that's great. Is that, is that? You know, like, has the planning commission already been involved or have you kind of vetted some new commercial desires, design guideline desires from the PC in order to then give feedback to incoming and potential development applicants?
That hasn't been a topic of conversation with the planning commission for, since we adopted those design guidelines in 2015.
I think like, like Heather was saying, I think that, that was a thought, you know, what, what she had said, what spurred, you know, in those conversations back last, the fall of 19 were smart growth goals. And, you know, what, what new development should look like and where we wanted to see, you know, where, where the community wanted to embrace development or preserve opportunities for the community. And so I think it was starting at kind of a higher level and then it would get more specific. I think that was kind of the intention, but Heather probably knows better.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that was, that was kind of the idea, but, and I think we can expand on that as I will, so.
So are we, sorry. I, I just want to avoid surprises on applicants as best we can. Do we need to, can we, can we set an expectation maybe between the board and staff to have those conversations and give the planning commission a heads up sooner than later or vet some of that for applicants to understand what they're planning for? Before they get to site plan review?
You mean, do you mean in terms of cost?
I mean, in terms of the design, like it, it seems to me that there's not necessarily a, any feedback for developing a, an application or a site plan before the expectation of bringing that before the planning commission is scheduled.
You know, um, the site plan review process got amended also in 2015 because it used to be administrative. And I found that there were a couple of examples of actually the staff didn't do it, just simply didn't do it. So I created the, the situation in such a manner that it would be a, a planning commission determination. And, and the idea behind that was that we were trying to make this site plan review process as short as possible. Because oftentimes what would happen is that we would get a building permit supplemental. And, and all of a sudden, the, the submitter gets surprised by the fact that you got to do more than just a building permit. You got to do it, go through a site plan review. So we try to make that as short as possible. And the site plan review process and the design guidelines, I think were all amended under this, a, a single resolution back in 2015. So the, sometimes, yes, there's going to be an applicant that comes in and, and does a lot of pre-production work and then starts to talk to us. And then gets surprised about the hoops they have to jump through. And there's really not a whole lot that we can do about that. Because they don't talk to us early enough in the process. And if we don't know that they're doing this, there's no way that we can shove it down their throats because we don't know about it.
I would just add on there that, you know, so if you look at this site plan review process within the code. There are specific, you know, it's specific about certain attributes to a site that you directs an applicant to be cognizant of. Then the design guidelines go into building design and scale. They go into lighting standards and landscaping standards. So there is a set expectation in the code that has specifications to it. And then I think that maybe the surprise sometimes comes with is a case by case unique basis that is indicative of the site. So, you know, in, in as much as Paul referred to the guidelines as being a little vague because we didn't want them to be overly onerous. But we still wanted to make sure that we were being cognizant of, of the aesthetics of building and, and the way that it is in harmony with the surrounding area and invite, and avoid the pitfalls of, so maybe mistakes from the past. We didn't want them to be overly onerous. But the code does have some specific guidelines in them. So that someone coming into the process knows what the basis of the review is going to be. And then I think that individually on a case by case, there can be unique qualities to a site. Jeff went through the site plan review process with us. And had forgotten, there was one other criteria if you're, you're in the scenic conservation overlay. And he pulled a permit to construct in that area. So the, the, I mean, he has from kind of firsthand experience of what that experience was like. I don't know if he has anything to share or to put him on the spot. But, um, so I just, just add just a little bit more to the thought process.
Yeah, I mean, on that point, I mean, I think, you know, the, the, whatever it's called, the, the pre-application meeting, you know, was super helpful to, you know, so that you don't do a ton of work developing a site plan before you've had certain paragraphs and, and steps pointed out to you. Yeah, I mean, so I, I, I can't imagine anyone not going through I can't imagine anyone not going through through that, you know. And well, I mean, people who don't think to have that meeting before they put a lot of work into planning seem like they're, you know, they should know better. And but but I think I think it was supposed to. I mean, I I can't remember now how I learned that you need to do that. But I also don't know. Sorry, to Paul's mind, I don't know how you how you alert someone that you're not aware of. Seems like an insurmountable problem. I mean, you know, if someone comes in a week before they want to submit something and they've done a ton of work already. I mean, that's just on them.
I think, Jeff, if I remember right, that you you broached the subject as just simply a phone call. And I don't know if it was Anne or Stacy or Sherry that answered it or me even. Because that was quite a few years ago, I think, wasn't it? Or a couple of years ago, at least?
Two years ago, yeah.
That you just simply said you want to submit a building permit and I think we just simply say, so where? And you tell us and then we see that it's in the scenic overlay. And we just sort of apprised you of that fact even before you submitted the building permit.
Yeah.
So and and that's the way it's really supposed to work is and and I have to say that it usually does. That somebody takes a look at the code and what it requires in order to develop a parcel. And oftentimes, the said person will find it a whole lot easier to talk to staff first, rather than try to figure it out on their own right through the code.
I'm not sure that we have to belabor this a whole lot more, but the the whole, I think that the bigger concern was not necessarily going on a site by site case in this particular area because there were a lot of variables with the city and the rail yard covenants and and just getting city and county kind of on the same page or engaged in the in a the same conversation to to be sure that, you know, we all kind of we're on the same page as best we can be while guiding applicants.
Yeah, you know, that's really a good point to make because there's a point at which we should not be talking very publicly about a development proposal. And most of that is before they actually submit an application and it's and it's accepted and scheduled. So I think like with the city, it might be easy for us to say, hey, we've had somebody approach us about thus and such. And we'd like to talk about what you think about that. And that would be something I think you're talking about, Sarah, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, having those conversations. I know the city too also has like pre-application meetings before somebody submits an application to be sure that they've, you know, get a feedback from all parties. So if if there's something, I mean, that's just part of the conversation about process on how we want to develop or not our process.
I think in the in the particular case that we're talking about up at Poplar and Mountain View Drive, that I think staff fell apart, fell down on that because we're not used to working with the city like this.
Oh, no, no, I don't. I don't. I I don't know any particular problems with that application or site. I think it just spurred that thought of moving down Poplar there with all of that vacant land. And knowing that the rail yard has covenants for their design. And if we really want to be thoughtful about that kind of northern gateway to the urban area, you know, of our community, we we just all need to have the conversation and continue the conversation.
I I think that's valuable advice for us, particularly as Poplar starts to develop out and it's looking like it is.
Right.
Because a lot of those developments up and down that street at that point, they were all done before planners existed. I mean, not just in Lake County, but planners existed anywhere. There was certainly no coordination with any local government. There was no building permits that were being reviewed. And and a lot of what we do is simply try to make sure that what gets developed instead of what's there now, it will still work in 25 years.
Right.
And I think we need more help than just ourselves to do that, like conversations with the city.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, and at the same point, I think it got brought up last time, too. You know, there's the state like C dot and what they do would or would not want an applicant to do. Again, if we can have those conversations strategically for long term planning down that corridor. You know, let's 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 organize those with C dot even on what they hope to look for and then what we would or would not be able to support as staff or as the county before. Yeah, I just would hate. It just turns very it's very difficult to react for applicants and also for for us, you know, we're dealing with Excel issues and trying to work on the PUC to make some of those parts of the process easier. And C dot and other utilities. You know, we can make a list including them as well.
And they are all referral agencies. And in fact, if there's a development within three miles of the city, it's code that we have to. It is code, isn't it? And that we have to make sure that we refer that to the city. But I I think, Sarah, your point is well taken that maybe need to do that with the city a little sooner than waiting until there's an accepted and scheduled application.
That's a great point. We don't have any even submitted applications on these yet. So great opportunities to have this front end discussion.
Sarah, Sarah, do you think you could put up your list again? Sarah, we're not hearing you.
I'm sorry. I said, I sure I I sure can, but I was I had I had to switch back to the agenda for today and the few items that were on there. Just to be sure to touch on some of those before continuing.
Sarah, please, I'm about to come. What are your fart smell? What are your fucking fart smell?
I think that one's gone.
All right. I'll help you monitor, Sarah.
Yeah, I just kicked that person to the waiting room. All right. Um. Sorry, back to the I'd like to get through. I think I'd like to go back, not not necessarily to the priorities, but the overarching conversation on, let's see, what do we have here on our original agenda? Staff projects, hearing process, enforcement and staffing. Do we want, Kayla, this? Sorry, you created the smallest, helped create the smallest staff projects. Are we trying to get an inventory of current projects happening?
So I think the last time that we had talked, Sarah, we kind of wanted to talk about what staff was working on and where their priorities were. So we were like talking about things like backcountry zoning and that type of thing, kind of like that list that you had had put up there. And so I think before we can really dive into that, it might be good for Anne to share with us. She had put together kind of a historic staffing pattern, if you will, in the building department. And I don't know if I had sent that to you yet, Sarah, but let me forward it to you.
That that it might be better to show that under D staffing.
Yeah, well, and I think I think for us to get to the the projects piece, Sarah, I just sent that to you. If you want to share it on your screen, for us to get to that project piece, we should talk through the staffing with building and land use.
Good idea. Change the order.
Yeah, sorry. Um, so so what I had talked about when I had met with Paul and Anne was the staffing that they currently have in the department and what they need to be functional within the department. And so I know that we have had some feedback come to us about things like like hiring another planner or something like that. And so in talking to Paul and Anne about that, Anne put together this functionality of the staff in building and land use. And so I'm going to let Anne kind of take you through this just a little bit because I think that she can articulate it a little bit better. And then I think that will set us up for a discussion about what that department and we as an organization need to really be successful. So Anne, would you mind walking through this just a little bit for us?
Sure. So what I did was just kind of go through and and just kind of give an idea of the setup and the daily operational and priorities and functionality of the department. And so you know, historically, we've always been staffed since like 2018 until we lost Stacy with two FTE devoted to the building department, permit tech kind of duties and administrative support. And then two FTE for the land use community development and supervision of the development of the department. And then I just went through and just kind of broke down priorities and functionality of each side of our combined responsibilities for the for the department. And and so under the building department, you know, I have just listed kind of our five daily general office and priorities and of course, building permits, inspection facilitation, accounting, customer service, and general office duties are really, you know, are kind of our daily functioning schedule or or our parameters. Then Land Use Community Development, Land Use applications always have first priority zoning review for building permits in order to help facilitate that process, compliance and code enforcement, addressing STR facilitation, special event permitting. And then then we can get into long range planning projects, B O C C project involvement at your discretion and planning commission support. You know, we try to we try to gauge all of those together. And currently, all staff is is cross trained in all of the administration administrative duties. And since we've lost, especially we feel it now as Stacy is no longer part of our our department in supporting all of these things on a daily basis. And we spend the majority of our time on these administrative tasks that I have kind of listed down below. And then I I broke them out into, you know, each item of this and kind of what the process is for each one of these. And I think it pretty quickly demonstrates that our focus in supporting the community and making sure that these priorities are met in a timely fashion to the best of our capacity is kind of broken down into, you know, all of these different ways that we need to manage the department. And so, you know, my summary just is that, you know, we are definitely feeling the loss of that administrative support and all of those tasks that are listed above are things that Paul and I have to, you know, we're required to devote the large majority of our time to, which leaves very little time for the pending projects for such as the adoption of the building code, the fee increase review, identifying the code. You know, we have code amendments that are sitting in the wings that that we either talk to you about or that we know are needful in order to clean up our code. And so all of those things, as well as like long range planning and providing assistance to the board on any of these priorities that, you know, are in the list. All of these other things have to get done first. There, you know, we're on a daily basis, you know, it's kind of come in, put out all the fires and then try to find the bandwidth to get to the, you know, the more of the planning projects. But I just thought that maybe it kind of helped illustrate the functionality of our department and where the majority of our time has to be in order to meet the expectation of the community and the needs of the community. And unfortunately, that that currently means that our time is so encumbered by, you know, the administrative lift of the department that that we're struggling. And, you know, that's largely why we haven't been able to get to the adoption of a new building code, that we haven't been able to do the code amendments that we know are imperative to the code and critical. And, you know, just and even the fee structure. So I just thought that maybe it kind of helped illustrate and explain the the intricacies of our department and kind of where I think that we are feeling the crunch. Paul can certainly elaborate on anything that he thinks that I might have missed. But I just thought maybe it would be kind of good to kind of dive in and look at what our day to day operational kind of needs and responsibilities are and maybe where we're underwater.
Yeah, Anne. Thank you so much for putting that together. I think that what is illustrated here is that there's a lot of stuff in the building and land use department that we do that is not directly visible to you. You see us in planning commission meetings. You see us in certain board meetings. But I don't think most of these things you may may not even be aware are are top priority issues that have to be done on before we get onto any anything else. So and it's a full list. And Anne and I are doing a fair amount of of what's here. Marla is getting better and better and better at all of this. But she's only been with us for a year and a half, and it takes several years to become familiar. And and I know also Anne and I are learning something new every week.
Paul and Anne, could you, when Stacy was with you guys, what pieces was she picking up? Was she working at? So if I'm reading this right, like, building department administrative staff is the two full time employees in the front of the of the of the office and then land use and community development would be Anne and Paul, right?
Correct. But we were able to cross train Stacy and she was providing support to us with special event permitting, STR facilitation and addressing.
And consolidation.
And I had and I had started bringing her on to help with lack consolidation, which helping and assisting us those, you know, we still reviewed those things, but she did the administrative piece of largely of those. And that was an incredible help to Paul and I and so that we could focus on all of the other things associated with the planning and community development part of the department. So yeah, those she assisted on the building side. And then she also assisted on all of those other items that are codified land use. So technically, they're on the land use side of things. But they have large administrative lift processes to them. And she was incredibly helpful at doing the administration piece. And then she would come to Paul and I And then, um, she would come to Paul and I for, um, supervision on completing them, but it was, it was a tremendous help at that time.
Yeah, and it's oftentimes difficult for us to separate building from land use because building is a land use. Um, and sometimes the overlap, uh, between the two is quite extensive. Um, and I think that during the summer, I think that Stacy and, and Sherry at the time, and now Marla, um, focused largely on building permits. And I think that's probably going to happen again this summer. In fact, I already know that.
Just, just the amount of, of, um, intake that we're getting in, in inquiries and, and emails and um, is, is gearing up to be a phenomenal year. There was like a hundred and twenty land sales in Twin Lakes this year. And I think every single one of them has talked to us at least three times. And so it's, it's just, um, it, you know, it's, it's a little frightening, I think, um, or a little daunting to the three of us to know, um, maybe what we're um, up against this year and knowing already how challenging things are. So.
Well, I'd like to throw out something for the board to respond to. I, I, I'm, I'm confused as to whether this is a debate of whether it has to be either or. Um, but why can't it be both? I mean, the way that we have prioritized staffing in public health, environmental health with the pandemic, like the influx of development and community development and the importance of being able to manage and juggle that well, especially in this time i- is incredibly important in my mind. Um, you know, I, I would be, I would be open to, I mean, in the same way that we've, you know, invested some more funds into the EDC for this time period. I'd be open to hiring both an administrative and a planner. I mean, we can't get far enough ahead of the curve here on so, so much work that we have to do.
I think, yeah, I think, I think we would be thrilled to hear something like that. I, I, I think that we've struggled with four people. Um, I mean, we're busy all the time. There's just not a break in the action. So, um, yeah, I, I think we would be, I, I, I think that's what Paul and I both said when we talked about this, you know, we thought we, we either or, but the thought of being able to have both, wow.
I would be, I would be fine with that. I wasn't aware or sure that that could be a consideration, but I think now that it is, that you bring that up, I, I would not be opposed to something like that if it meant spreading that, that workload and making the department more um, efficient and able to handle the influx of development that we're anticipating seeing. I would, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll second that. I mean, just seeing all that stuff and just knowing the explosion in both the day-to-day stuff. And then, you know, as we've just been talking about like there, I mean, there's so many things we need to get ahead of on, you know, the incoming development. It, it seems like that's needed. I mean, I, two thoughts. One is just, you know, what we can afford as a county, obviously, you know, um, uh, you know, because there are probably lots of other departments that could use this help too, uh, you know, um, so I just say that obvious. And then the other thing, I, I don't know how hard this would be to sort of cross-train people, but I wonder if, or I'm curious to what extent some of this is seasonal or could ebb and flow. And if there's a need for sort of like some cross-cutting, sort of especially administrative support, you know, because I know, you know, there are crunch periods that finance or HR have. You know, like we've had, you know, huge, you know, and, and those are tiny departments. So like one, one person goes on leave or is out. You know, or there's, we're hiring tons of people. It's just, it creates a big backlog and a problem. Um, so I'm just throw it out maybe for a separate discussion about whether it will be possible to cross-train people to kind of flex across more than one department.
Yeah, I, Jeff, I think that's a good point because particularly in environmental health, they need administrative support and not necessarily administrative support in terms of like specifically going out and doing septic inspections type of thing, but like in taking an application and then getting it to the right place. And so I'm wondering if, if we are able to hire a planner and an admin assistant, if that could be utilized between both departments for an administrative purpose of in taking an application and then getting it to the right place or or whatever that looks like. But I think that that would be incredibly efficient. Um, because I think we've definitely historically seen kind of a disconnect between, um, the public health application process for things like septic regs and, and, um, and then connecting that back to like a building permit or a CUP process or, or whatever. And so I think if we had some type of connection there, it might be, might be worthwhile for us to think about that. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, uh, Jeff, Kayla and Sarah, um, cross-training, um, for these administrative tasks and then some, um, is a priority. It, it has been a priority. It is a priority and it probably will always be a priority. Because it largely because of the examples that you gave. Once, once the building permit season calms down, then we start processing applications for short-term rentals that, for special events for, what else, Anne? Short, uh, special events, short-term rentals. Oh, and contractor registration. Yes, a lot of our work is seasonal. For the entire department, there's never a break.
And it, and as we're starting to see, a lot of the builds that are coming in have large budgets. So they're starting to thaw the ground and we're going to start seeing building year-round based on the quality and type of construction that's coming into Lake County and the funding behind it. Um, I don't think that we're, I think we will start seeing what surrounding communities that have already felt this kind of wealth coming into a community. We will experience that too, that, um, that will be a, a budget line item that they will be able to consider constructing year-round.
Yeah, you can take a look at the, um, uh, rail yard as an example. We were issuing them building permits in September and October of last year. Um, and they worked right through the winter. And, um, I think we're going to start seeing more of that because I had always heard when I went to work for Eagle County a lifetime and a half ago, um, I had always heard about how it calms down in the wintertime. And, um, I don't think it did. Uh, and Eagle has been for the last thirty years has been building right through the winter. So, um, and, and yes, there are days where work just can't occur. But they get out there with brooms and shovels and clean it all off and continue working. So we're going to start seeing that too. In fact, I'd have to say that we've already got more per building permit submittals this year than we've had in previous years. So I don't know where to take all of this. I really love the idea of a, um, planner and a, um, administrative staff. Um, and it, when we, when we first heard Sarah that you were, um, thinking that a planner might be somebody better than an admin staff, I think both Anne and I looked at each other and said, how about both? This was like, you know, a couple of months ago. So I think that we like that idea. We don't know where to put them. You know, that's, that's a technic, technicality.
Could we, um,
The jail's open.
Well, I'll take that office.
Remote working. It also, it also gives, I think, a lot more enthusiasm looking at the, the list of priorities because it honestly, the list is a little daunting, um, in our current situation. So, um, yeah, I, I, I think we both, we actually have the ability to get excited about the priority list.
No, that's a great point, Anne. I mean, and, and, you know, you're also making me think that, you know, one of, one of the things that I see as a priority is being able to instill that institutional knowledge and spread that those relationships and understanding from board members coming and going to staff and knowing what a day-to-day, you know, to-do list you guys have, um, a lot of that would, would live very nicely in land use. You just don't have the ability right now to necessarily do that. And I know that you want to, um, and, and, and again, I think it's certainly appropriate for a lot of those, um, that information and those strategies and long-term goals and planning to, to live with land use and or across, you know, hub works and land use and whatnot. Um, but this would give us that opportunity.
Yeah, um, thank you for saying that, Anne, because it put words into my brain that I hadn't recognized until you said it. This list scared me. And if we had a, um, more staff, uh, because, because I think Anne and I were just thinking in terms of catching up, not going beyond catching up.
Right. Yeah. And, and yeah, and some of those things on that list scare the heck out of me in understanding kind of the broader implications of them and knowing that that's not necessarily well-understood or appreciated by us all yet. Um, and that's again, due to all of our kind of uh, boundary of capacity. Um, so, I like it. All right. Well, I guess we have another item for a, a work session topic for the board to figure out how we make that happen sooner than later and or moving forward. I mean, I, 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 I would, I think we can figure out how to, how to finance that. Um, I don't know if we need some more formal direction right now to approve that, um, staffing pattern. Or at least that as the intent.
Well, sorry, Paul. I think since we have an opening right now for an admin role, since Stacy's role was never filled. Um, I think it makes, makes the most sense for us to maybe move forward with getting that posted now. Cause we have that job description developed already. And we have the money and the budget for it. And so we can check that off the list and then we can work on the planner job descrip- job description and then formal allocation of those funds here in my next month or so. Like, what do you think, Sarah? Or what would you recommend as a plan?
I think that sounds fair because we also have some other, um, compensation strategies to, uh, lay out across departments that would help in that hiring piece.
Well, so it sounds like you as the board have some things to discuss regarding, regarding that. Um, I, I think that it is something that's not going to happen today or maybe even tomorrow, but, um, we would love it if, if we could have a, an increase in staffing, um, to be able to handle what's going on. Um, do you, Sarah, do you want to talk about hearing process?
Sure. I would love to.
Yeah.
Um, what?
Go ahead.
Uh, I don't know where to back up to. I think everybody's heard my qualms or requests on making some tweaks here and there. And I think, um, I would love to just, I think the simplest way to remedy, um, our current process, both for the board's benefit and the applicants is to have, um, public hearings remain open through um, the BOCC hearing them, um, which would give the BOCC an opportunity, a better opportunity to, um, ask questions of the applicant and have a conversation or a debate deliberation among the board. Um, I, I believe that that is, you know, Aaron Smith had recommended that, uh, a while ago. And I think that that's the simplest way to kind of meet the needs and questions and concerns that have come up.
How do you think that'll look? Planning commission and board have a joint meeting. And then the public hearing portion of that doesn't get closed until the board is done with their meeting.
No, I think, so the public input portion of the hearing can be opened and closed during the planning commission's hearing. Then the hearing is tabled to the date certain, which has already been determined, which will stay that typical week after, um, date for the Board of Commissioners. And the Board of Commissioners, we might offer the applicant to give us a, an abbreviated presentation because we've attended the planning commission meeting and seen the longer presentation. Um, an abbreviated presentation and then questions for the applicant and or new thoughts or concerns um, to be shared. If there is a desire for public to speak or we want to offer that, because I think that was one of, uh, the things that I had been concerned about with only having the public only have one opportunity for speaking, um, a public, the public input portion can always be opened, reopened and closed again for the Board of Commissioners, um, hearing.
But it's, but new information can't be introduced, correct? So you can't, because if new information, if, if that, if, if opening a backup constitutes new information, then do we have to bounce it all the way back?
We would anyway. If, if we do it like most other counties do it, which is actually advertise the planning commission. And then when the planning commission acts and then we advertise the board, um, if a new information comes up in the board's hearing, it still has to, it would still have to go back to the planning commission. So the, the fact of holding the planning, the Board of County Commissioners a week or two, depending on whether it's the second or the fourth meeting of the planning commission, um, reduces the chances of new information being introduced. If they are fairly close together as they are right now.
You know, uh, the only thing that I might suggest, and, and I don't know exactly how to administer that, you know, um, Aaron was really good at developing an own opening statement for, um, the planning chair that gives good direction to everyone present on how and outlines the process at the very beginning of a hearing, which I think was such a great addition, at least for me to the process. And, um, I'm wondering if there's some, something similar. So if it went to that type of, um, situation, I just think that it, it's really good to lay out the ground rules ahead of time in like a standard format so that maybe we could avoid, you, you know, it's just that thought of, oh gosh, now we have to go all the way back again. And so, and I would think everybody, you know, the applicant probably doesn't want to have that happen. Because the one thing that we have, when we can't incentivize development with, through districts or um, there's not a lot of, we don't have a lot of tools in our tool box to incentivize development. Um, they love the fact that we have a one-hearing process. It saves them incredible amounts of time. And so the efficiencies, I think, and, and with people living outside of the county, although now with Zoom meetings, there's probably more accessibility. although now with Zoom meetings, there's probably more accessibility um, for the public, you know, um, sometimes it's, we've heard it's easier to come to one meeting. Um, so anyway, I would just say if, if there's some way to avoid having to rehear something because of that, so maybe some way to set down some really good um, expectations of, of, of that and maybe like the same format as the opening statement that's done, that might be, might be helpful if you want to entertain that.
And I don't know, and I don't know that I'd anticipate, though I'm sure it's possible to happen, any new information. But I wonder, I think, I think though, the, the concern on that, and this can be a question for legal either now or to come back to us with an answer is, I, I would presume that the decision-making body, the concern is that the Board of Commissioners hears the same information, not necessarily that the planning commission. And if we, I know we, I think we had started at one point, the, uh, having a planning commissioner join the board's final decision meeting for any kind of questions perhaps, um, but we could do that. And if something did come up that was significant enough, that really effectively changed the application. We could have that.
It could be taken, but I, I think it's not just, just the decision-making body that would hear a new application. It's the due process that the public did not get to provide comment if there was a substantial change. So I think it's the process and not just for the benefit of, um, decision-making body to hear new information. I think it's, it's to keep the process intact, but.
Yeah, I think that you're, you're, what you said, Sarah, was substantially. Um, and I think that there are going to be some new information that isn't substantial. And that would be probably decided by the county attorney, who, um, I'd sure like to hear from, see what she thinks about this. It looks like she's ready to speak.
Well, and, and yeah, I am muted because we have been looking into this question because the, you know, and comparing what other localities are doing. And typically there are two, you know, two separate hearings done. You know, to where you have the planning commission hearing and then you have the, the hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. And I think part of the concern right now is that the way it works, that there's not much opportunity for the commissioners to follow up and ask questions or to have additional information presented when it's in their court, if you will, for decision-making. And so, yeah, that's, that's something we're looking into. In fact, Katie and I were exchanging emails about that yesterday, based on some information she's developed. So, um, yeah, I, I think the due process aspect is, is a good point. But I also think that the commissioners need to have the full information if they're the ones making the decision.
Heather?
Did I miss something in that?
I don't think so. I think that, um, uh, that I, I like the fact that the planning commission and the board hear the same thing.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, it took me a little while to like that fact because I've always been used to the two-hearing process. I, and I think, Chris, what you're thinking about doing here is, allowing the board to have its hearing after the planning commission and the board have had theirs. Is that
That's how the, it, it seems to be, based on the information we've got. That seems to be the more typical approach, um, with, uh, with these type of matters. So, um, but, uh, you know, I think the concern is that the, since the way it goes right now, the commissioners sit in on the planning commission, they hear the initial information that's presented, then they leave for the deliberation part of it. And then that perhaps creates somewhat of a vacuum that they, you know, as to any information during that part of the process. And if there's no further public hearing on the application or the information, I think that's where the gap is created, between what's presented in the planning commission and then what's before the Board of County Commissioners. And I see, I see both Heather and Jeff have
Clear. I don't, I don't, I don't actually think that this has to change the timeline in which we do conduct
Right.
our, our process, but, um, Heather, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I think that unfortunately there's pros and cons to both ways of doing it. And I guess I would urge you guys to really, really consider those pros and cons because I feel like we've had lots of communities that have looked to us because of this. And we've had lots of developers over the years who have said, man, I can't tell you how great it is that this is, it's a, it's a one-public hearing process. Because to go through the public comment period on major developments, like I think about doing Angel View and I think about you having to do another public hearing after that. Every one of those private citizens that came to that meeting are going to feel like they need to come to yours also. And you are going to need to deal with every one of their two-minute comments. And just as what happened with the, um, the attorneys who built on that mining claim, they submitted information after the fact to the county commissioners. And I think that when they hear at a planning commission member that there's opposition about this one thing, then I absolutely think almost every time they're going to come to the next meeting with new information to a but, whatever they didn't have to meet the public, you know, opposition at the previous meeting. I think it's, to me, it sounds like a nightmare. I think that if, if for some reason we're not running the planning commission meetings in a way that allows and offers the commissioners adequate questions, um, and information gathering, then we need to change that. Um, but I don't know why missing out on our deliberation is going to be, I don't know how that piece is going to get solved by having a second public hearing. So I guess I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding how commissioners missing out on just the planning commission's deliberation is, is somehow losing information and therefore in need of a second public hearing. So that's the part I'm lost on.
We aren't set up to have our own deliberation.
Right.
I think that's the bigger problem.
Yeah.
Jeff? Can't be done as part of, so you, because public hearing is the only thing really that gets closed and then we refer it to you. I guess I didn't realize you guys don't have your own, and are you just not allowed to if you don't have a public hearing?
It's not, yeah, our, our meeting is not hosted as a hearing. It is just an action on the resolution. So it's not, and, and that's, if, if it were a hearing, then we could have our own deliberation. The, the applicant could be present to answer any, and clarify any questions or clarifications. Um, but I think we can probably set something to your point of public comment. I mean, if we all sit there and listen to the public comment, go along with the process as we typically do, leave for your deliberation, um, and just offer public comment, uh, you know, new public comment or in writing, I'm not sure.
Well, we can't, during deliberation, we can't be getting information from the applicant either, asking questions or getting information from the applicant either. So if you're, and I guess this is a question for legal, is there not, Chris, a way for them to be adding deliberation to their action?
Yeah, well, and that's what we're looking into to see if that, but that, the problem is, is I guess that it can't be done at the same time that the planning commission one is. So I, I guess it would be if, you know, it, and what we're trying to figure out is the best way to structure it, if it is that at the decision-making day, you know, when it, it comes before the Board of County Commissioners, if that would be the appropriate time for the commissioners to review and deliberate the information they received from the public hearing part of the planning commission. And that, you know, if it's, I agree with you, I think it would be horrible to, to open it up for two, you know, to where you have the two public hearings and all that additional information. And it gives the, the applicant and staff, if you will, the opportunity in between the two to develop more information, either in support of their respective positions or whatever. But I, I think the problem is, is that it's, you know, the, as Sarah pointed out, there's not an opportunity for the commissioners to, to discuss and deliberate the information they've been presented with before having to, to make a decision. It's pretty much just a thumbs up, thumbs down as to the recommendation that comes out of the planning commission. Right? So that's what I understood was part of the concern is, yeah.
Or at the city, is it the same, don't they do the same joint public hearing? It's just that the city council deliberates and meets.
Yes.
Don't they do a joint? Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, we reached out to Erin Smith, the city attorney who handles, uh, uh, or not the, not Erin Smith, the city attorney handles some of that stuff. And that's part of what's pointed out. We have talked to Erin Smith about the process and her experience in other, um, localities as well on this issue. And it, it is, there are two hearings, but the question becomes whether, or two, two meetings, if you will, where decisions are being made, the planning commission with their recommendation and then the, the commissioners with their decision. And then the question becomes if there's the requirement for the two public hearings at both of those.
I also think that, um, when we discussed this before and Erin met with the planning commission, and I think, Anne, was the board available at that meeting? I, I have a feeling that the board wasn't there.
No, Sarah and I met with Erin in the morning and then, and then there, an emergency came up. And, and so when she addressed the board.
So I think that what Erin's came up with is that the board can stick around for the planning commission's deliberation, but not the vote.
That's, that's, that's my recollection too. I was just gonna, I was texting that to Chris, is that my understanding is we got down to that there wasn't any reason she, that they couldn't be together for the deliberation. But when it was time to make the motion, that's when the board would retire from the meeting. And then the discussion and deliberation or discussion, excuse me, on the motion was something that, that the board wasn't present for. So up until the point, because my understanding to keep the, the process solvent is that, um, the board should not be present in that process, uh, for the motion portion. But other than that, there was any reason the board couldn't be there, they couldn't be together for the deliberation.
Yeah, because that was one of the points made, having to do with that, it, because the commissioners leave during deliberation, they don't have the opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or anything. So if it is just that, that they stay through the deliberation and then leave before any actual consideration is made by the planning commission, that, that might be a better solution. That the issue that I understood was why, um, why it's been set up or handled the way it is, is because there was some concern raised at some point that the commissioners' participation during the planning commission meeting may end up unduly influencing the planning commission, uh, members.
So, Chris, my question is, Heather, excuse me, made a point about during their deliberations, when they close the public hearing, at that point, they don't have any communication with the applicant either, only staff. Is that correct, Heather? So would that change for us then as the Board of County Commissioners to where if we were in a position of deliberation after a public hearing, we would be able to be afforded the opportunity to have conversation with the applicant unlike the planning commission? Or would that remain the same?
I'm not sure why either the planning commission or the board couldn't ask questions of the applicant during deliberation.
Yeah.
About, yeah, I guess that's what I'm asking, like procedural clarification of, of how that happens.
Yeah.
We've always been directed legally that we are not, because it's the same as public comment. So you're allowing the applicant to continue submitting information, but that you're not getting public. And that could be incorrect information, but for all the years I've been doing this, that's the legal way, because we've asked this question lots of times before. Cause I've always felt like commissioners should stay for deliberation and all of those things. And we've always been told that, um, uh, the cap, planning commission can talk to staff and staff can through a loophole talk to applicant, but that questions can only be directed to staff after public hearing has closed. But maybe that's incorrect information.
Well, and I think that's part of the concern is that the, you know, if you're trying, that's, that's the hitch in terms of trying to avoid having two hearings i- is because of the, the full sharing of the information. Um, and, and, you know, if there are issues raised with the planning commission during deliberation that the, the applicant can't address because the public hearing part has been closed, then they also don't get to address that before the commissioners consider their application.
Chris, I have a question. So can, can the public hearing not be closed? The applicant has the right to rebut public comment. But if there's clarifying questions of the, if the, if the public hearing portion is, is left open for clarifying questions of the applicant, can, can there be a distinction in that?
Well, I, that's a question I'd be hesitant to answer off the top of my head, you know, without checking to make sure.
I can see the city does it that way. They, the, the deliberation, the applicant, it is not considered public comment. And, and that's where, and if you get body language from the, from the, from the audience and you've closed public input portion of the hearing, you can, somebody can move to reopen that public input portion. Jeff, do you have, you've had your hand up for a while. Sorry there.
No, it was, a lot of my questions were about what people were discussing. So I was happy to ju- just absorb. I'm, I'm glad I'm not the only one a little uncertain about this, especially having not been through it. I mean, I guess for me, uh, well, I guess, one, one question is, so having not been through this as a board member yet, is that really true that we just have an up-down vote on the P C recommendation? Like, we can't change or modify the recommended decision?
We can, but we aren't given like the framework in which to have the deliberation and then have the discussion with the applicant justified. Yeah. So that's why, that's why it's really weird.
Yeah, no, I mean, I mean, because that was my, and that's sort of where my brain was, is like, well, here we are, like, slapping in additional considerations, but we didn't hear so much of the back and forth that develop the recommendation that comes to us, you know? So I guess for me, I was like, I mean, I, 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 I think I'm, I, I, I can definitely appreciate the points made about the efficiency for everyone of the one hearing. I just don't want to be shut out of hearing all the consideration. Well, you know, the deliberation and then discussion of the motion of the P C, I want to, I would love to hear that. And I, I, I've heard a few people say like, oh, but we could be intimidating the P C. It's like, well, what? Like, I mean, what, like what lever, I mean, we, we are going to be voting on this. Like we ha- I don't mean this in like a weird way, but like, I mean, we have the power over this. Of course, I mean, don't, it's not intimidation, it's information. Like, like if we're going to vote something down, wouldn't you want to know that? Um, like, again, that's not, we're not, I mean, what, like, what intimidation do we have over the planning commission other than our vote?
Well, and part of it, it's not just intimidation. I think a part, intimidation is a word that others have used. I would think it's more of an influence, the influence instead of the intimidation, the influence that the commissioners who are there may, may give if during, you know, comments and questions and deliberations, commissioners ask questions or make statements that may somewhat infer how they're feeling about the application or certain issues and stuff. And, and so I think that's part of the concern, uh, with that happening.
That seems strange to me. Isn't that, I mean, isn't that, wouldn't you want to know that?
It's always seems strange to me too, but I think, and Chris, you probably know, I, it's like some sort of statutory thing. Like it's not something we're allowed to change because I think we
That's what, yeah.
We wanted it to be that. I mean, I think it makes the most sense for you to just stay through the whole thing. And who cares if you hear us vote because you're going to see it written on a piece of paper in a few days anyway. And then you're going to either agree with it or not. So I don't understand it either. And I, and I, if we're, if we're allowed to get around you guys staying in for deliberation, I think that makes the most sense. Um, and I guess the other part of that question is, are they allowed to participate in the deliberation?
Yeah. And that's what we're looking at. And I apologize that we haven't gotten far enough along in our research to be able to fully answer that question yet. That is something it, it, and I, I will say Katie and I have been lamenting that there's, that even with the statutes and stuff, there's not more guidance. Um, it, there isn't as much depth with case law interpreting some of this stuff and, and also, um, trying to, to avoid situations where we end up creating the case law interpreting this stuff, you know? So I we are, this is something, like I said, we were just talking about yesterday, but we just haven't haven't finished the the research looking into this issue yet.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I I would love to see if there's some sort of way we can figure out a middle to this just cuz I the more I think about it, the more I think of how many I just say, you know, and I think back to a lot of contentious um applications that we've had. Um and I think like a normal site plan review or I don't know, something that we just have to do that's pretty easy to go through is not as big of a concern to have two hearings, but I just keep thinking through some of the contentious subdivision hearings and things like that we've heard. And I can envision just like some of the public backlash from being able to or having two different hearings or having the applicant change what they're doing by the second hearing. Or people just not taking seriously the first hearing and then why are we there? You know, why have a planning commission if really the only the applicant and the people who are attending those public hearings are only gonna they're like, well, we just need to come in. The decision body is the one making the making the decision. So we're really only and then we just become this formality hearing that's kind of a waste of time. So there's just like a lot of pieces to this that I think we should consider too as far as I mean, I I get it. I think that you guys should be involved the whole time. And if there's a way to do that, that makes the most sense, but.
I have one quick question. Um instead of relying on staff to bring the statement of motion, I mean, that's that's our process. Staff brings the statement of motion to the board for an action. What if the chairman or co-chairman, whoever's available, brings the statement of motion to the board? What you know, and and can answer questions because you know, right now at that meeting, staff's the one that brings the motion and and reads it into the record and and tries to kind of explain the thought process behind that. But instead of relying on staff to do that, you know, through a kind of a third party kind of idea, what if that rec- what if that statement of motion is brought directly from the board, from the PC to the board?
I don't, I like the intention, I think, behind your thinking there, but I'm not sure that that's realistic and that actually, I mean, I don't know, to me, that might be borderline. I mean, that would be intimidating. Not by not like an intimidation of the board or whatnot, but I I don't know. I think uh I I think I do think it would be helpful if um if the planning commission were present or or somebody was available to answer questions or to clarify like the thought between some deliberation. Just as a to recall what that conversation was. If we are not able, especially if we are not able to remain in the deliberation portion of the joint hearing.
I think you are allowed to remain for the deliberation, just not the vote.
Right. Well, that's that's news to me as of today, and that's great. But I think maybe
Confirm that, I think.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I think we just need to confirm like what, you know, what is typical, what's allowed and what we all want to do. So that
And 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 I also heard a distinction made between deliberation and then discussion of a motion on the table. And I I guess having not been through this is, you know, I don't know how much I mean, how much discussion of emotion is there? I can imagine there being a lot of amendments to a motion to get to a final PC recommendation, but I don't know where most of the discussion and you know, hashing things out happens cuz again, I just sort of wanna benefit from hearing as much of it as possible as legally possible. So I'm happy to step out for the vote for sure. I'd hate to miss discussion of amendments to the motion on the on the table if that's where a lot of the, you know, sort of real real deliberation, you know, in the plain English sense comes from the PC.
Yeah, I I I understand, Jeff, but you know, the um the vote and the deliberation or the uh discussion of the motion on the table and the amendments of of motions, um that's all the vote. Not the deliberation.
Chris, I would just ask like my question and I'm sorry I put deliberation instead of discussion, but um maybe just for consideration, can can the board listen to the Zoom recording of uh and and watch and listen to the to the motion discussion prior to the hearing since we have a week in between?
You know, I I I saw that i- in the chat that you raised. I I wish I could say I knew. I will have to that. I think that's a it's a novel idea. And we'll just have to look and see if that's something that that would be allowed as well.
Yeah, I don't think that there is any intimidation between the board and the planning commission or any of our
No, I think it I don't think it was the intimidation. I think it was the notion that the potential influence. You know, if you had a commissioner who might be kind of kind of foreshadowing what their thoughts are on a certain project or application or something through the questions that they're asking or the statements they're making. I think that's part of the the concern.
Yeah, um because I've I've never seen anything like that in just my six years of being here that the planning commission is intimidated by the board being there for a vote. Or at least I've never anticipated that 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 would actually occur. I don't know.
We'll look at it.
Yeah.
We will look at it and circle back around as as quick as we possibly can. It is something that's being looked into right now. So it's not something new on our plate. It's it's something we're working on already.
Yeah, I I I Sarah, I I agree with you about that, that it seems to me that when the the issue uh that's been acted on by the planning commission comes to you, the board, your hands are kind of tied. Or I would feel like it if I were a planning uh county commissioner.
I mean, I I yeah, I guess that my piece on how how awful a position it can feel to be in on our side of the table, how awful it could be for the applicant and or, you know, public. So we will, we will continue to look into what our our options of procedure should be.
Okay. Do you want to talk about enforcement?
Um.
Cuz I don't know.
I have a three I have a three o'clock meeting. But I can I can stay on for just a few more minutes here if you'd like.
I think why don't we why don't we end there?
Okay.
Um unless the board has any other thoughts that they'd like to share on that cuz I think I think that was just a that's probably another lengthy conversation about I guess kind of rebooting again, similar to that conversation of the design guidelines and, you know, what what how we are going through application processes.
Yeah, Sarah, I did print this to Katie and Katie reached out to Erin Smith. And so she is getting some some background on um some enforcement procedures and putting something together for things like structures that that appear on the pictometry flyover, like like the procedure that that happens if something like that is identified. So Katie and I are working on that with Erin Smith right now. And so um we can bring something like that to you maybe in a couple of weeks.
Like Sarah's.
Yeah, I think her connection was getting unstable. I mean, that sounds good to me. I mean, I I for my part, I just feel like I had heard this issue come up in a couple of different discussions. You know, definitely in the BC, but um you know, and I've had a couple constituents raise to me that they feel like sort of code, you know, building codes not always visually looking like it's adhered to. So I just, you know, just sort of curious to learn more about what enforcement capacity there is, you know, and and beefing that up as we have more more stuff happening. So I I mean, at this point, I just love more information about what our senses of the current situation was. So.
Yeah, I'm I'm just sort of sitting here dying to know uh enforced. I think enforcement.
Oh, my gosh.
All I can think of is in terms of code enforcement. And and I don't know what other kinds of enforcement that might there might actually be. So um um and I'm kind of really just chomping at the bit to find out what what enforcement means or the concern for enforcement and what that means. I was hoping to get into that today.
I'm I'm sorry that okay, I'm just gonna hang up. I'm sorry, my connection is bad. I was trying to call in, but I got back on the computer. Um, so I think Kayla, I'm sorry I missed that. Kayla was touching on some of those questions and pieces of needing to understand like, you know, with backcountry, if if it's X, if you have a road or if you are in a roadless area, but you need to get equipment up there. I I feel like there's like three different options for things specific to the backcountry area. And so like enforcing what level of the code enforcement can can we? Or do we have to outline of like being options, I think, in in expecting any kind of variant variant variance from code? Um and the other, I think it would just be a really good conversation to have on, you know, just process through um review, I think, application review. There was a question on like engineering costs and whatnot, and I think we need to kind of talk through that a little bit.
So this isn't code enforcement?
It's not code enforcement?
Well, I'm I'm asking the question. Uh this, so it sounds to me like it might be more procedure than actual code enforcement, like somebody brings a camper onto their property and that's not allowed by code. So I have to write a letter.
Um, yes. Although now that you say that, I have a lot of questions about enforcement of getting mobile homes off properties.
And then building code, like somebody is actually constructing without a building permit. So there's zoning enforcement and building enforcement. And it doesn't sound to me like that's your topic of concern.
I think there's a I think there's questions across the board, but I think that it's more procedural.
Okay, like then we'll put that off until your next work session?
Yeah.
See.
I guess, Sarah, I guess if you could delineate what that enforcement looks like for for code enforcement and procedural enforcement, that might be helpful for all of us to have a conversation around.
I think the I think the I think the procedural is looking at creating an efficient process. And I think we need to revisit what review we or what extent of review we do and why. And maybe it's perfectly fine, but I think that if we're trying to create efficiencies in places and um yet we are incurring a cost to an applicant, um I just want to make sure that that cost is necessary um through engineering review and that our engineering firm doesn't have an open checkbook to review whatever they think might be necessary. I just I would like to talk through what that process um and thought process looks like. And then the, I think, talking through those pieces that might be specific to something like the backcountry zoning of the level of again, the variances or, you know, we you wouldn't, you can't require a sprinkler system for something that doesn't have a well or pressurized plumbing. Like, we need to, I think we need to come to a consensus on how to approach uh certain scenarios so that it's not so that there are clear, there's applicants can anticipate what is required of them.
Okay, so it's focused on the application process rather than on the actual enforcement process?
Yeah, I think that's fair to say.
Okay. All right. Well, are we gonna put that off for another couple of weeks?
Yeah, I think I think it'd be helpful to get that legal, it sounds like Kayla's asked that legal perspective on on some of those variances or considerations. So it'd be helpful to get that information.
Yeah. Sarah, if you want me to follow up with Katie about some of that procedural enforcement too, I can definitely do that with her as well. Cuz we did have some conversation around that, um but not into as great of detail as we had with other enforcement issues. So I can circle back with her on that as well if you'd like.
Okay. I'm sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, now I can.
Okay. All right, yeah, let's let's circle back on on our questions there, but um and we'll hear back on procedural hearing uh procedure. And with that, I think it sounds like Kayla, you have to go and there's kid pickup. But is there anything else before we adjourn?
Sorry, I don't I don't think so, but I'm I'm curious if we can just put another date on the the table to follow up this conversation with.
Right.
Yeah, that that's what I was gonna ask cuz I'd kind of like Katie to attend. You know, we've kind of worked out where I'm attending most of these meetings and stuff, but on these type of issues that she's working on, I think it would be good for her to be able to attend as well or instead of me.
Sorry, Paul, I cut you off. Were you trying to say something?
Same thing.
Okay, yeah, I I think if we could put something on the on the table now for a date to revisit in a couple of weeks, that would be helpful cuz I think that if we space these out like every two weeks or something like that, it helps us keep on track and and move the conversation forward a little better.
Your next work session is on the twenty-third of March.
We can plan for that.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, so I actually I I it sounds to me like application process is more to the point of what your concern is, Sarah, rather than actual enforcement.
I think so, or what or what we can enforce, right? Like the variance, what what variances are we, do we need to accept as conditions of X being the condition of whatever application or property? as conditions of X being the condition of whatever application or property? Um.
Because the, this issue of referring it to our, a county engineer is codified. And we may also, in, in that case, we may be talking about changing the code. Or, as you may have suggested before, the choosing of a county, a contract county engineer maybe needs to go out to bid. Because, yes, that, that process, I agree that that was a shocky bill for Angel View. But I don't, I don't think we should be looking at basing our choices and decisions on just that one.
No, no, I don't think so, but I, I think, I think to get on the same page of what, what is staff's current approach to reviewing applications? And what triggers do you guys see where you can't answer or don't have the background to answer or, or correct certain aspects of an application? And then I feel like that goes to maybe an engineering question. But I wonder if there's something, if we can create a threshold of like a dollar amount or based on, you know, I, I'm not sure what that process even looks like for you receiving an application like Angel View and then handing something over or receiving any application for a subdivision. Like, how, how does that get handed over and what is the request to the contracting engineer for review? Just the concerns that you have or an overall review?
Overall review. And I would tell you that, that gets appreciated by road and bridge as well, in the case of public roads. But no, we, at, at preliminary sketch and preliminary plan and final plat, the engineer is involved through the entire process.
Not unique to our jurisdiction. That, that's an expectation of any development in pretty much any, any, whether, if the county, if we had a county engineer, that would be, we have a contract. But that is, that's an expectation of all development in, in any jurisdiction, correct?
Many jurisdictions have their own staff engineer.
Well, that's what I said, notwithstanding, right? And even then, there, there could be costs associated with that.
And if, if that were the case, if we had an engineer on staff, I think our planning fees would probably have to pretty skyrocket. So, so, yeah, now that I have a really clear idea of what it is that you really want to discuss on the 23rd, then, then let's put this off until that time.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Heather, thanks for joining.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have anything else right now. I think this is set up pretty well for us to talk about on the 23rd, too.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the idea of just keeping, coming back to, to things on this list in order. I mean, for, to me, I would love to not have the discussion about some possible sort of small changes to the comprehensive plan, you know, I, I'd like to not that have, like, to not let that slip too long. Because I just feel like that, that's an important tool to sort of, as new development comes in, you know, have, have something to hang some things we might like to ask for without getting into more specificity and thinking things through. So I feel like there's some relatively small clarifications or additions that could help us a lot in the next sort of year, year and a half.
Yeah, I agree, Jeff. I think I, we've got to kind of put, put that up there as a priority, because we're not the same place we were when that was originally written in, like, 14 or whatever.
Can we, when's the next Planning Commission work session? And can we maybe request that we all do some review on the comp plan to bring successes and identify gaps or?
We could do that in the, the first April meeting, since we, our next one is committed to Angel View on the 22nd, but we could do it the first meeting of, of April.
And that would be the 12th? Yeah, that sounds like a good, that sounds like a good idea. Maybe we can talk about that and perhaps with what we might learn on the discussion at the city on kind of design guidelines or that gateway vision. Maybe we can talk about those things, each of those, at the Planning Commission meeting?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and at 3:16, we'll adjourn. Sorry for my technical difficulties.
I'm having them, too.
Bye-bye.